Merci, j'apprécie. Ok, l'audio est bon. J'ai deux microphones. Alors, comment allez-vous tous ? Bon ? Bon. Un plaisir d'être ici. Une introduction fantastique, non seulement de Peter, mais de la communauté parentale. Je laisse les amis loin. Une des choses que je voudrais garder à l'esprit ici est que je suis un invité dans votre communauté. Et être un invité signifie que vous n'êtes pas arrivé avec une expertise où vous dites aux gens ce qu'ils doivent faire. Vous essayez de fournir des informations au maximum et de voir si les gens vont être ouverts à ça. Et la meilleure partie d'une présentation où vous vous étonnez devant les gens et que vous essayez de donner votre expertise, votre confiance dans le sujet, est aussi d'être ouvert à ce que les gens doivent dire. Et donc, nous avons prompté cette présentation aujourd'hui avec quelques questions et réponses. Certains d'entre eux ont déjà été envoyés. Il y aura une opportunité à la fin de prolonger ces conversations en faisant notre panel. Est-ce que je suis bon ? Mon écran est parti ? Non, ce n'est pas le cas. C'est bon.
Est-ce que c'est ?
Oui, j'ai un pré-ecran. Regardez. Tech. Mais en nous abattant, il me serait préférable d'introduire moi-même un peu. Je vis en British Columbia. J'ai un bureau à Vancouver. Et j'habite dans tout le Canada pour parler de l'Internet. Je fais un certain nombre d'événements corporatifs. Je fais un certain nombre d'événements d'éducation. Je rédige des articles d'éducation. Je suis aussi invité à l'université de British Columbia et de la Université de Victoria. Ce que j'aime dans mon travail, c'est que ça change toujours. Ça change toujours. Il y a des jours dans le côté corporate où je fais tomber la tête en disant : "Je ne peux pas croire que je reçois payé pour faire ça." Et il y a des jours dans l'éducation où je me dis : "J'ai tellement peur pour ces professeurs." Parce que vous pouvez très bien empathiser avec ce que cela signifie d'avoir tous ces enfants à l'école, venant à eux chaque jour avec tous les problèmes imaginables qu'ils peuvent avoir. Et puis un professeur vient me voir et dit : "D'accord, comment trouve-t-on Snapchat ?" Parce qu'ils n'ont aucune idée. Et pour être honnête, certains le font, mais d'autres se battent juste pour passer la journée sans avoir à naviguer sur ce qu'un enfant navigue, quoi que ce soit sur les médias sociaux. Donc, en nous abattant et en parlant de l'Internet, et à l'introduction de Peter, et c'était presque comme si vous aviez lu mes diapos, vous verrez que dans ma introduction, je souligne très bien que nous, en tant que parents du 21e siècle, nous pouvons apporter des valeurs du 20e siècle à la conversation, mais pas des attentes du 20e siècle. Un couple d'exemples de cela : J'ai grandi au Québec, à l'extérieur de Montreal, pour la première partie de ma jeunesse. Et mon père ne nous permettait pas de regarder beaucoup de télévision. Nous pouvions regarder une demi-heure de télévision pendant la semaine. Et le samedi, nous regardions une chose très simple : le hockey. C'est ce que nous faisions. Maintenant, enfin, j'avais trois canaux de télévision de choix. J'avais CBC English, CBC Français, et un canal qui venait de la frontière du New York. Et nous n'avions qu'un canot. Et ce canot était grand, mais pas si grand. C'était une petite écran, mais c'était physiquement grand. Et si vous aviez un de ces TV, vous saisissez exactement ce dont je parle. Quand mes Canadiens de Montreal, je sais que je suis en Ontario, mais je vais dire que mes Canadiens de Montreal jouaient sur la rive occidentale, je allais dormir. Et puis je me réveillais et j'allais mettre la radio en activité et j'entendais leur jeu à Los Angeles ou Vancouver avec un délai de trois heures. Il n'y avait pas de enregistrement du match et de regarder plus tard. Je me souviens de courir au bain entre les publicités. Et c'était la façon la plus facile de le faire, pour que je puisse aller plus vite que ma sœur et obtenir le bon endroit sur le chaise. Notre téléphone home, nous en avons deux. L'un était dans le lit des parents, l'autre dans la cuisine. Nous avions une corde de 18 mètres jusqu'à ce que mon père revienne d'une conférence avec un tas de téléphones portables qu'il a achetés aux États-Unis. Et je me souviens de passer à la maison de quelqu'un et la ligne était occupée. Et vous étiez d'accord avec ça. Ce n'était pas grave que vous ne puissiez les obtenir immédiatement. Qui se souvient de grandir avec des technologies similaires ? D'accord. Mes enfants regardent Netflix et ils sont déçus qu'il n'y ait rien dessus. Je ne peux pas équiper ça de toute façon, de manière ou de forme. Je me souviens quand mon père est allé dans la boutique vidéo et a loué non seulement la cassette, mais aussi le VCR. C'était un gros problème. C'était un gros problème. Et je me souviens de aller à Blockbuster et de négocier avec quelqu'un en disant : "Vous avez la cassette ?" "Oui, vous l'avez." "Ils ne viennent pas ce soir. Ils l'ont gardé, mais ils ne viennent pas la prendre." Puis le gars derrière le comptoir disait :[266.89][266.98]"Si vous attendez jusqu'à 8h et ils ne sont pas là, nous la donnons à vous." "Oui." On attendait 20 minutes en espérant que quelqu'un ne vienne pas louer une cassette. Évidemment, un monde différent dans lequel nos enfants vivent aujourd'hui. Mais au point de l'équité, et l'introduction de Peter était assez succincte : 95% de nos écoles au Canada sont connectées à l'Internet pour le but de l'éducation. Ça veut dire que peu importe où un enfant est vraiment engagé dans l'éducation dans ce pays, ils ont l'habilité à apprendre de la même manière qu'un étudiant dans un quartier métropolitain, qu'un étudiant dans les écoles les plus célèbres, ou les écoles où nous nous asseyons et disons : "J'aurais vraiment hâte qu'on ait plus d'argent pour ce bâtiment." Mais en pensant à ce que nos enfants font avec la technologie, la plupart d'entre nous ne voient que les choses qui nous aggravent en tant que parents. De la même façon que mon père a vu une show de télévision qu'il n'était pas intéressé et a dit : "Vous dépensez votre temps devant la TV." Donc aujourd'hui, en pensant à cette idée du passé étant le présent, les valeurs de la parentage ne doivent pas changer. Mais la façon dont nous approchons d'entendre ce que nos enfants font avec ces technologies pourrait nécessiter un point de vue du 21e siècle où nous disons : "Oh mon Dieu, regardez, nous sommes 20 ans dans cette période de 100 ans qui fait partie du 21e siècle." "Qu'est-ce que ça va ressembler à 30 ans pour eux quand ils atteindront le point de la moitié ?" "Qu'est-ce que ça va ressembler à 2080 ?" "Qu'est-ce que ça va ressembler à 2100 où ils sont inquiets de ce que tous leurs ordinateurs ne fonctionnent pas parce que nous n'avons pas programmé les calendres correctement ?" Qui se souvient de Y2K ? Donc, je veux juste vous montrer quelque chose. Je mérite beaucoup la recherche. J'aime la bonne recherche, que ce soit sur notre santé physique, que ce soit sur notre santé mentale, que ce soit sur tout ce que nous, en tant que humains, faisons sur ce planète. J'apprécie la recherche. Mais ces trois études ici, ces trois études comprennent les 10 dernières années de recherche sur trois sujets. Quand il s'agit des effets psychologiques de la violence des médias chez les enfants. Eh bien, cette étude est sortie en 2014. Et oh, les patterns d'appareils mobiles utilisés par les soignants et les enfants pendant les repas dans les restaurants fast food. Quelqu'un a financé cette étude pour savoir si un soignant assis avec un enfant à l'intérieur d'un McDonald's ou un Subway aurait un impact négatif s'ils regardent trop longtemps l'écran pendant qu'ils sont assis à un McDonald's. Quelqu'un doit rechercher ça. Ou l'idée que "être vu ou non être vu", les valeurs de la célébrité sur Twitter en 2011. Si vous prenez ces chercheurs en 2010-2011 qui ont fait cette étude et les montrent ce que Twitter ressemble à aujourd'hui, ils se tourneraient et diraient : "Oh mon Dieu, la plupart de notre recherche est inutile parce que regarde ce qui s'est passé avec Twitter dans les huit dernières années." Maintenant, enfin, j'étais un grand défenseur des initiatives cyberbullying, des initiatives internet plus sûres. Et très bien au milieu de, disons, cette décennie passée, j'ai atteint un point où j'ai pivoté drastiquement en disant : "Je ne peux pas, avec une bonne expression, me tenir devant les enfants et dire : "Ne parle pas aux strangers sur Internet." Parce que j'avais des enfants qui me viennent en disant : "Hey, j'ai eu un Uber hier." Il s'avère que toutes ces leçons de danger aux strangers que nous avons donné sont de maintenant une application où vous vous mettez dans le voiture d'un stranger et vous y allez. Ou : "Ne soyez pas mean aux gens sur Internet." Je ne veux pas juger nos voisins du Sud trop hargement, mais ils ont un leader de leur pays qui tweete que si j'enlevais son nom et que j'ajoutais quelqu'un d'autre, ça ressemblerait à un cyberbully, littéralement ciblant chaque jour des individus. Donc, comment peux-je, avec une bonne expression, me tenir devant un enfant et dire : "Aidez-moi à ne pas écrire sur Internet parce que ce que vous écrivez sur Internet aujourd'hui pourrait vous faire électoré demain." C'est l'une des vertus morales que peut-être nos voisins du Sud ont perdu ces deux dernières années. Mais dans cela, en tant que père, mes valeurs ont changé aussi. J'ai des enfants et mes enfants vivent dans un monde où tout ce que nous avons à voir avec la technologie est normal. Pour moi, je suis assez bon avec ça. Mais quand je leur parle de la façon dont j'avais dû me battre pour regarder une show de télévision et mettre du foil en l'antenne, ils semblent penser que c'est la pire chose que n'importe qui ait pu faire dans les valeurs de l'entertainment. Donc, dans cela, je veux que vous reveniez toujours à votre jeunesse en parlant. Qu'est-ce qui aurait signifié pour vous d'avoir un téléphone portable comme vous le faites aujourd'hui ? D'avoir Netflix comme vous le faites aujourd'hui ? D'avoir l'habilité d' commander quelque chose et que ça apparaisse sur votre porte de entrance aujourd'hui ou demain, selon Amazon Prime ? Ou l'habilité de rester en contact avec des amis et la famille qui, longtemps avant, vous aviez dit au revoir et jamais sait si vous pourriez leur parler encore. Dans cela, si vous êtes un membre d'un groupe WhatsApp, d'un groupe Facebook, si vous pouvez voir des photos de amis et la famille et que vous pouvez utiliser ces outils pour rester connecté, nous avons des bénéfices de santé et de santé pour ces technologies, autant que nous avons les négatives. Mais quand je vois une étiquette comme celle-ci : "Est-ce que votre enfant a un compte sur les médias sociaux ?" Je ne vais jamais refuser la question parce que la question est bonne. Mais si vous me posiez ça et vous disiez : "Jessie, est-ce que vos enfants ont un compte sur les médias sociaux ?" Je vais vous donner deux réponses différentes pour deux personnes que j'essaie de faire avancer le mieux que je peux. Ma fille, parce qu'elle est plus proche de l'école, peut-être que les valeurs de la communication pourraient être un peu différentes. Aussi les attentes. Mon enfant de cinq ans, il ne fait rien de vraiment intéressant que je sente qu'il doit aller sur Instagram ou Snapchat ou Twitter. Il y arrivera peut-être, mais peut-être qu'il ne le fera pas et il sera bien avec ça aussi. Il est tellement heureux. Mais faisons ça. Si vous voyez l'étiquette, regardez ce que l'auteur a écrit sous la main, la chose principale qui vous attire. Les enfants sont concentrés sur les suivis et les photos et le partage. Est-ce leur culture ou est-ce la nôtre ? avons-nous mis ça pour nos enfants ? Où nous avons objectif des appareils numériques à eux depuis le jour où ils sont nés et ont dit : "Je vais prendre une photo de vous et je vais la mettre sur Internet pour que les amis et la famille puissent voir." "Je vais vous mettre devant un iPad pour que je ne vous ai pas à écouter pendant l'heure suivante." Je suis venu hier. C'est incroyable combien de enfants savent comment se mettre sur l'iPad immédiatement. Mais la chose est que la personne assise à côté m'avait un enfant et cet enfant a aidé la mère de faire l'écran sur le jet de l'Ouest. Nous devons prendre en compte ce qu'ils font avec la technologie et si nous pouvons les aider à travers le chemin, pas juste les pacifier. Mais si nous regardons pourquoi les médias sociaux ne sont pas intelligents pour les enfants de l'école moyenne ? Eh bien, cet article a été écrit en fonction de la recherche où ils ont regardé les impacts mentaux des enfants de 9 à 13 ans où ils vivent sur une horloge 24 heures où ils peuvent messageer leurs amis. Et beaucoup de ces enfants ont l'expérience de la santé mentale qui n'est pas associée aux médias sociaux, juste l'idée que leurs connexions quotidiennes peuvent se connecter avec eux. Si quelqu'un me demandait quand j'avais 12 ans : "Est-ce que vous avez du mal à l'école moyenne ?" Je pourrais avoir été capable de donner quelques points de vue. Mais personne ne me demandait cette question. En fait, j'avais un conseiller à l'école qui a dit : "Vous allez le comprendre ou vous allez mourir en essayant." Imaginez un conseiller aujourd'hui disant ça à un enfant. Nous ne faisons pas en fait certaines de les réalités que les enfants ont affaire. Mais aujourd'hui, quand nous regardons la recherche émergente, il y a en fait une énorme quantité qui vient notre chemin parce que nous avons notre première génération de test presque terminée. Les enfants qui sont nés en 2005, les enfants qui sont nés en 2008, ils étaient le premier groupe d'enfants où les iPhones ont été de tous les jours. Facebook est de tous les jours. Et maintenant, en leur venturant leur chemin vers l'enseignement secondaire et leur chemin vers l'enseignement post-enseignement, nous pouvons leur poser des questions adultes comme : "Qu'est-ce que c'était comme à votre cinquième anniversaire quand quelqu'un a objectif une caméra numérique contre vous ?" "Comment sentez-vous que votre mère a mis tous les âges de votre vie, disons de quatre à 16 ans, sur Internet pour que les gens puissent voir ?" "Qu'est-ce que ça signifie que vous étiez assis à la table de repas où quelqu'un a dit : "Je ne veux pas voir un téléphone dans votre main", mais cet adulte était assis avec le sien parce qu'ils pensaient que les règles ne lui applyingaient pas ?" Donc, dans cette recherche émergente, quand vous voyez une étiquette comme celle-ci où elle dit : "Hey, les enfants pourraient être d'accord." Ça va aussi à nos craintes de parentage. Nous avons utilisé certains des craintes de l'écran et de la concentration et de la distraction comme moyen de dire à nos enfants : "C'est mauvais pour vous." Juste comme mon père qui a dit : "Si vous regardez trop de TV, votre cerveau va devenir mouchoir et vous sortir de l'oreille." Je suis d'accord. Et pour être honnête, il pense que je pourrais avoir fait mieux, mais vous savez, trois canaux, c'est tout ce que j'avais. Donc, quand je vais à une école et je parle à des enfants et je montre une étiquette comme celle-là, "Est-ce que vous pensez que un enfant de grade 9 va adorer ça ?" Oui. Ce kid rentre chez lui de l'école : "Mère, père, j'ai vu une présentation aujourd'hui. Je ne connais pas le gars, mais il a dit : "Un professeur de philosophie dit que je devrais jouer plus Fortnite, pas moins." Maintenant, cet parent va me détester. "Que vous avez dit à mon enfant de 14 ans sur jouer plus Fortnite ? C'est bénéfique pour leur éducation ?" "Whoa, whoa, c'est pas ce que je disais." Vous voyez, la chose est que les étiquettes ne nous donnent jamais la recherche complète. Elles ne nous donnent jamais la vraie histoire derrière ce que la personne dit. Et ce chercheur, son nom est Dr. Jordan Shapiro. Non seulement il est un philosophe, mais il est aussi un psychologue clinique. Et les enfants que il recherche, eh bien, ils mesurent comment ces enfants utilisent des tablettes et des pinceaux et comment ces enfants, quand testés de grade 1 à 5, ont une plus grande numerosité, littérature, et ils percevent les choses en 3D différemment que leurs collègues de classe qui n'ont pas le même accès. La seule différence ? Les parents orientent la conversation, aident leurs enfants à comprendre ce qu'ils voient dans ces espaces de médias. Pas juste donner la technologie et dire : "Ne faites pas de bruit pendant une heure." L'étiquette ne fait pas ça intéressant, non ? Maintenant, si nous le remontons à ça : "Nous ne savons pas combien de temps d'écran est trop parce que la science n'est pas totalement là." Oh, j'adore cette étiquette. Mais la chose est que pour le mental critique, c'est une étiquette qui devrait vous faire penser. Qu'est-ce que ça signifie que la science arrive là ? Je vais vous donner un exemple. En 1968, neuf sur dix médecins ont recommandé des cigarettes Marlboro pour une expérience de fumée plus saine et meilleure. Qu'est-ce que vous pensez que le dixième docteur disait ? "Ne fumez pas, vous allez avoir le cancer et mourir." Mais dans cela, ça ressemble vraiment mal quand vous le mettez dans une campagne de marketing. Donc, maintenant, nous avons des médecins qui disent : "Ne fumez pas." Mais la réalité de ce fait, il nous a pris 40-50 ans pour arriver à ce point où les gens ont finalement dit : "Ce n'est pas sain pour vous et peut-être que vous ne devriez pas commencer au début." Mais quand il s'agit d'écrans, si vous êtes à l'œuvre et que vous passez cinq à six heures à regarder un écran, vous faites votre travail. Et l'écran pourrait être une partie de ce dont vous êtes requis dans votre travail. Mais si vous rentrez après avoir regardé un écran pendant tant d'heures et que vous continuez à regarder Netflix avec quelqu'un que vous aimez et que vous vous souciez pendant que vous êtes assis sur le chaise, cette expérience est différente de regarder l'écran à l'œuvre. Vous êtes heureux d'être dans cet espace. Vous en profitez. Et même si vous avez eu environ 10 heures d'écran dans votre journée, cinq ou six heures de ça était pour le but de votre travail. L'autre, peut-être parler à la famille. Peut-être que vous avez acheté quelque chose sur Amazon. Peut-être que vous facez la famille de l'autre côté du monde et ça vous a fait sentir incroyable. Donc, nos mesures doivent changer. Parce que quand nous nous asseyons et disons : "Les enfants dépensent juste leur temps à regarder les écrans", non, ce kid trouve la physique dans ce bloc. Et ce kid regarde un vidéo sur quelque chose qui s'est passé 60 ans avant et qu'il a accès à un archive de données que je peux imaginer avoir en tant qu'enfant. Et le plus important, ils ont les outils pour passer la décision. Qui se souvient de demander à vos parents quelque chose où ils vous ont tout d'un coup jugé ? "Où avez-vous appris cette parole ?" "Quel de vos petits amis stupides a dit ça ?" Je me souviens de la première fois que j'ai demandé à mon père quelque chose que je ne devrais jamais avoir sorti de ma bouche. Mais sa face a changé dans un milliseconde où il m'a regardé et a dit : "Où avez-vous entendu ça ?" Et j'ai très rapidement retourné en disant : "Je sais pas. Quelqu'un a dit ça. Je n'ai pas l'idée. Je ne sais pas. J'ai fait une erreur. Désolé. Je ne le dirai jamais." Seul sa réaction m'a fait terrifier. Si je réagis de cette façon avec mes enfants aujourd'hui, ils vont aller à Google. Et Google ne juge pas, sauf que vous avez malchappé la parole et ça dit : "Vous vouliez dire ça ?" Mais j'aimerais beaucoup avoir mon enfant venir me voir et me poser des questions étranges où ma expérience de vie, peut-être ma compréhension de ce que c'est que cette parole, peut donner à mes enfants une compréhension de pourquoi ça pourrait être inapproprié pour leur âge ou offensif à quelqu'un d'autre. Et si je peux étendre cette conversation et leur donner un peu de mon expérience de vie, je ne suis pas meilleur que Google. Je suis juste différent de mon père. Donc aujourd'hui, quand nous pensons à l'écran étant bon pour vous, peut-être. Notez cette caveat : peut-être. C'est l'idée de : "Hey, une personne a un cancer de stage 3 et ses poumons meurent. Et si ils arrêtent de fumer aujourd'hui, ça ne signifie pas que le cancer s'en va. Mais à la fin du jour, si ça les aide à prévenir d'avoir un gros poids ou peut-être changer leur santé, peut-être que le docteur se tournera et dira : "Vous savez quoi, en ce moment ici, ne fumez pas. Juste trouvez une meilleure façon de maintenir certaines des choses saines que vous devriez faire en progressant vers le cancer de stage 4." Mais la réalité de ça est que nous avons des enfants maintenant qui peuvent acheter une vapeur sur Amazon. Ça peut apparaître à votre porte de entrance et vous ne savez jamais parce qu'ils payent avec une carte de débit qui est virtuelle, pas littérale. Et à la fin du jour, quand nous pensons à des enfants qui vapent et qu'ils croient quelque chose parce que quelqu'un leur l'a dit, j'espère que les enfants vont sur Internet et chercher des recherches vraiment bonnes sur pourquoi le vapeur n'est pas bon pour eux ou une alternative saine. Mais en même temps, quand nous pensons à l'écran, qu'est-ce que ça signifie pour vous en tant que famille de participer à l'utilisation d'un écran qui est bénéfique pour vous ? Si vous vous asseyez et regardez un film ensemble, super. C'est du bon écran. Si vous serez sur le chaise et vos enfants sont là à regarder un film, mais vous continuez à vérifier votre téléphone, vous ne participez pas avec la famille. Vous choisissez de choisir un écran plus petit parce que vous pouvez. Et pensez à tous les publicités que nous voyons, que ce soit d'une grande compagnie de télécommunications ou de notre propre compagnie de téléphone portable. Ça montre que tout le monde est connecté d'une certaine façon. Mais dans la maison de la famille, tout le monde semble connecté à l'Internet, le film, le show, mais pas les uns aux autres. Donc, dans ma famille, le vendredi soir est le soir du film. Et dans cela, il y a quatre personnes dans la maison et il y a quatre vendredis dans le mois. Ce qui signifie que tout le monde dans la maison, un vendredi, peut choisir un film. Et peu importe combien je me torture de regarder ce film encore et encore et encore que mon fils aime regarder, je sais qu'à un moment de ma vie, je vais réfléchir à le regarder avec le plaisir et l'excitation qu'il a en tant qu'enfant de cinq ans et je veux peut-être revenir en temps. Mais si je le manque parce que je suis trop occupé à vérifier quelque chose sur mon téléphone, peut-être que je suis juste celui qui a besoin d'un appel de réveil, pas mes enfants. Donc, dans cela, vous voyez cette étude ici : "L'écran étant bon pour vous, peut-être." Ce professeur, son nom est Professeur Shabinsky. J'ai dû pratiquer ça un peu comme vous pouvez voir les lettres. Il se tient à ses découvertes, appelant les mandats d'écran des boardes de santé inutiles, insupportés par les preuves. Il est le premier à indiquer que nous avons besoin d'une autre génération d'enfants qui viennent avec ces écrans. Et puis nous pouvons vous dire peut-être que nos yeux se développent différemment, nos cerveaux se développent différemment. Mais nos enfants sont littéralement la première génération où nous avons pris leur histoire et l'ont mise en ligne pour que le monde puisse voir. Nous ont montré à eux des choses autour du monde et il y a les bénéfices, mais il y a aussi les négatives. Et donc, dans cela, quand vous regardez certaines des étiquettes que vous voyez en tant que parents, j'encourage toujours à revenir en temps. Quelle était la chose que les gens étaient déçus quand vous étiez enfant ? Quelle était la chose qui allait faire baisser le déclin de la civilisation parce qu'il avait émergé et que les gens disaient : "C'est la seule chose que nous ne devrions jamais laisser à nos enfants accéder." Mais avec une bonne éducation et une compréhension, ce n'est pas si mauvais. C'est juste différent de ce que la génération précédente l'avait. Donc, je vais vous donner un exemple. Cette étude est sortie en 1941. Cette docteur, une excellente chercheure à l'époque, elle a réussi à obtenir un peu d'argent pendant la Seconde Guerre mondiale pour établir si les enfants avaient des rêves à cause du drame de crime radio. Maintenant, qui ici a déjà écouté une histoire de radio ? Orson Welles, World of the... une histoire de la guerre du monde ? L'idée que vos enfants ont des rêves parce qu'ils écoutent trop de radio. Ils ont des idées décentes du monde parce que le signal de broadcast est venu par l'océan et maintenant ça fait que votre enfant agit différemment. Cette étude était intéressante pour moi parce qu'elle a regardé certains enfants qui n'avaient jamais vu des films avant. Et en leur demandant : "Pourquoi êtes-vous craint ?" "Eh bien, j'ai entendu quelque chose sur la radio." Eh bien, quand j'étais enfant, j'payais pour le film PG-13. Et puis mon frère de mes amis travaillait sur le ticket, donc nous sommes entrés dans le R1 que nous n'étaient pas supposés entrer. Je ne sais pas si quelqu'un d'autre était aussi déviant que moi, mais j'ai trouvé ma façon de contourner les idées de ce qui était approprié. Mais en pensant à cette idée de la façon dont la technologie change, ma grand-mère, qui a 96 ans cette année, elle m'a récemment dit de l'ancien radio qui est venu à leur maison, un grand morceau de furniture que elle et son frère pouvaient regarder, mais ne toucher. Ils n'étaient pas autorisés à le lever. Et elle m'a dit comment elle utilisait les combats de boxe et qu'elle imaginait ce qu'ils étaient. Et le lendemain, elle voyait le journal avec l'étiquette et cette partie de son cerveau n'était pas bien parce que maintenant l'image de l'individu était différente pour elle. Mais, d'interessant, ma grand-mère aujourd'hui a une TV à écran plat et elle me demande si je vais lui acheter un iPhone. Et je ne le ferai pas parce qu'elle ajoute une application bancaire et maintenant j'ai des problèmes parce que maintenant j'essaie de trouver qui est le scamateur, qui essaie de se rapprocher de ma nana. Donc, dans cela, l'an dernier au Canada, 22 millions de dollars ont disparu de ce pays par des scams de taxes. Et oh, des nouvelles fakes. À peu près 70% de ça a été partagé en 2018 par des gens qui étaient 55 et au-dessus sur Facebook. Donc, peut-être que les enfants sont d'accord. Peut-être que les enfants seront bien parce qu'ils seront plus critiques de la façon dont ils regardent le monde. Peut-être qu'ils vont Google certaines choses pour s'assurer qu'ils obtiennent la réponse correcte plutôt que celle qui ressemble vraiment bien et obtient le plus de claps. Mais ici est où je vais vous challenger. Qui ici a déjà été sur un site où ils ont sorti l'un de ces ? D'accord. Maintenant, qui a déjà été sur le site où vous avez répondu à la question et qui vous a dit de le redire parce que vous avez mal fait. Et puis vous avez commencé à être en colère. Vous dites : "Je sais ce que ressemble un car. Ne me dites pas ça." Maintenant, quand nous pensons à ça, c'est l'une de ces outils qui est supposé nous garder plus sûrs sur Internet. Ça vous permet de acheter quelque chose, de aller acheter quelque chose où ça vérifie que vous n'êtes pas un robot, où ça vérifie que vous ne voulez pas acheter beaucoup de tickets tous en même temps. Mais, d'interessant, quand vous cliquez sur ça, vous n'avez pas à être une personne qui conduise un car pour répondre à la question. Mes enfants qui ne conduisent pas peuvent indiquer qu'est-ce que ressemble la derrière d'un car. Ils peuvent indiquer les signes. Mais tout sur Internet a un by-product. Donc, c'est pour la sécurité et la sécurité d'un site web. C'est pour la sécurité et la sécurité de votre achèvement. Ça vérifie aussi que vous êtes une personne réelle. Maintenant, juste pour la curiosité, c'est un tuesday. Qui a fait l'un de ces dans la semaine, semaine et demi passée ? 40 millions de ces arrivent tous les jours. Et pendant les huit dernières années, nous utilisons les CAPCHAs pour rendre notre expérience d'Internet plus sûre. Mais il y a un by-product. Et parfois, les questions sont assez drôles. Comme : "Cliquez sur tous les hydrants de feu." Quelqu'un voit un hydrant de feu ? Est-ce que quelqu'un sait le by-product de ce qui se passe quand vous cliquez sur ça ? Pas la sécurité, pas la partie robot, le by-product. Nous enseignons aux voitures qui conduisent à opérer. L'intelligence artificielle. Chaque fois que vous répondez à l'un de ces, une intelligence artificielle saura qu'est-ce que ressemble un hydrant de feu. Ce qui est quand vous cliquez sur ça, vous dites : "C'est une question stupide." Pas pour une intelligence artificielle. Ça fonctionne toutes les variables. Donc, qui ici aime conduire ? Qui ici hait conduire sur la 401 ? Qui a déjà essayé de fusionner sur une route où une autre personne semble avoir un ego à eux ? Comme : "Je ne dois pas vous laisser ici. Comment dares-tu penser que tu devrais pouvoir sortir de cette route aussi ?" Will une voiture qui conduit a-t-elle un ego ? Will elle essayer de se positionner contre un autre conducteur causant un accident ? Will elle conduire stupide dans des conditions de conduite mauvaises ? Non. Désolé ? Sauf si vous le programmez. Et encore une fois, si vous êtes le programmeur. Mais si vous êtes la personne qui le passe, peut-être qu'il y aura une conséquence légale pour ça. Vous voyez, la chose est que quand nous pensons à l'idée de ces systèmes, ils vont émerger dans la vie de nos enfants, pas la mienne. À votre point, s'il y a le programmeur, 90% de nos volailles sont automatisées. Les pilotes à bord sont là pour une surveillance. Ils sont là pour le décollage et le landing. Mais quand ces volailles convergent tous vers Pearson, le processus automatique a tous ces avions communiquant les uns aux autres avec la surveillance, ce qui est peut-être où vont nos routes. Mais si vous ne saviez pas que vous enseignez une voiture qui conduit en fonction de votre perception en cliquant sur ça, peut-être que notre littérature des médias doit aller plus du crainteur à : "Qu'est-ce qui se passe ?" Et la meilleure partie de ça, quand je pose cette question à une audience d'étudiants de grade 10, ils mettent leurs mains en haut. Ils ont les réponses. Donc, dans notre conversation, nous allons nous concentrer sur la sécurité d'Internet pour nos enfants. Mais l'une des choses que vous devez garder à l'esprit est que quand nos enfants jouent un jeu vidéo contre 100 personnes et ils n'ont aucune idée de qui est cette personne, c'est ok, sauf que cette personne ne traverse pas une limite. Quand cette personne dit : "Tu es vraiment bon à jouer à ce jeu vidéo. Puis-je vous message? Puis-je vous parler ?" Votre enfant a besoin des outils pour savoir qu'ils peuvent venir vous parler et dire : "Je me sens inégalé dans cet espace. Pouvez-vous, s'il vous plaît, m'aider ?" Malheureusement, ce qui se passe est que les parents qui sont craint de l'Internet, craint des craintes qui peuvent être associées à leur enfant parler à un stranger, "Je savais que ce jeu vidéo allait être un problème. Je vais me débarrasser du jeu vidéo. Je l'envoie." Et tout d'un coup, l'enfant ne reviendra pas et ne parlera à un parent la prochaine fois qu'il a une inquiétude parce qu'ils se souviennent de la conséquence. Donc, ma question pour vous est que si nous nous concentrons sur la sécurité des médias sociaux et peut-être sur les problèmes du cyberbullying, nous pourrions passer des heures et des heures. Et peut-être qu'il y a vraiment de bonnes recherches qui nous donnera une idée de aujourd'hui. Mais dans cela, quand nous pensons à où nos enfants sont dirigés, But in that, when we think about where our kids are headed, are we producing media ethical kids? Kids who are using these tools in ethical ways? Are they literate, involving the medias that they see? And as curators of stories, do they understand the consequences when a story goes too far out of their control? But in that, it is 2020. We're so close. And maybe instead of maybe focusing on limiting, we focus on curating. Let's start with the digital identity. My children, they exist. They're wonderful. They're no better, no worse than anybody else's kids, but they're mine and I kind of like them. But there are no forward-facing images of my children on the internet because I don't want the internet to have my children just yet. When my daughter gets to the age where she starts exploring her own idea of identity and telling her story, I'm gonna be there to help her. But it's not my job as her father to put her on the internet at the age of five and tell all my friends how happy I am. I'm using her identity for my affirmations. And in this connected world, that might not be the best currency. Because if we're going to live in a world where facial identification exists, where telling your story means, "Hey, in 30 years, somebody can, you know, look you up online and decide whether or not they're gonna hire you for a job," why don't I hold back on a little bit of that until my child gets to that point where they really do understand what it means to put your image online for the rest of time? But that said, I meet kids who tell me, "Oh, I've got 1,500 followers on Instagram." Great! Who are they? Why are they paying attention to you? And when I have a student who comes forward and shows me all the amazing things they're doing on the internet, and that's why that person's paying attention, I'm gonna applaud it. But when a child says, "Well, I don't know who they are. I just take a couple pictures and it's cool to have a number," we have to reframe that conversation for that child of what their worth is. And maybe some of those values don't exist in their home. But at the same time, when I meet a kid who says, "Well, I have like six Instagram accounts, but three of them I can't log on to because I can't remember the password." Digital identity. Now you're throwing something on the internet, but you don't know how to maintain it. So let's try us. Who here has an email account you can't log on to because you can't remember the password? Anybody? Yeah? How about a social media account? I had to make a new one. Let's try passwords. Does anybody here have a credit card, debit card? Yeah? Does anybody here have like a credit card for a store, like a Home Depot, something like that? Yeah? Who here has the same PIN code for all of them? Am I close? See, the thing is, we expect our kids to learn physics and calculus and algebra, yet we can't go further than a four-digit code because we might not be able to get access to our money tomorrow. Criminals love that. They love that complacency. So just think about it for a second. If you can remember your childhood phone number, what is it about our brain that works in certain ways, but other ways we get overwhelmed? And what is about opportunity where people will then use information to go further in their interests? When I call the bank and they try and verify who I am, they ask questions like, "Your mother's maiden name?" "The color of your first car." Well, hey, if I'm a heavy Facebook user, people can find that out pretty darn quick. Which means all those things that we now rely on will change in the next 20 years as well. Do you want our children prepared for that, or do you want them fearful going, "The bank told me I have to get a new passcode. I can't remember four digits." So now, as we think about the idea of digital rights and digital literacy, I'm encouraging you to think about two really important pieces. Networks and network safety. When I'm in a school, I don't jump on the Wi-Fi because I need to get online. I have a phone for that. And my phone is my network. I pay for that bill. My bill, my name, my use. But if I'm in an area where the cell phone coverage isn't the best, I might get on the Wi-Fi for the purpose of checking my email, and the school has to let me into that space. But when I get to a school network and my phone handshakes and says, "Hello, welcome. We're gonna let you do some things." There's a history to that. And school districts have that history. So when I tell a student, "Oh, by the way, your school district has the history of everything you did on the Wi-Fi," kids get kind of freaked out. But then I remind them, "Oh, at your house, on your router, your parent's name is associated to all the things that you did online." They're like, "No, no, no. I deleted the history." "How you didn't? You didn't delete the router history. You didn't purge everything from Bell. You didn't do that because you can't." And the most interesting part there is they're quite surprised that wiping the history of whatever websites they went to wasn't enough. But just think about the way that we use these technologies. You go to a website, and all of a sudden, there's advertisements about things that you talked about yesterday. Facebook looks at what you do. Instagram does the same thing because it's owned by Facebook. But as you think about the way we tell our stories, I want kids thinking about safety based on security of self and communications health and wellness. Meaning if they're given a device for the purpose of safety, it's not taken away because it was abused. It's guided and curated, and kids then understand there's a privilege to having it as much as there's an expectation of appropriate use. But I don't think our communities have changed too much in the sense that you can't walk from point A to point B being, you know, concerned overly for your safety. But maybe that's just my neighborhood. So when I meet a parent who says, "I don't feel safe without my child having a phone," who am I to judge that? Because maybe that parent has those anxieties and those concerns where a phone does make the parent feel better about knowing where their kid is. But if the kid tells me, "My mom put an app on my phone that tracks me everywhere I go," I really want to find out what's going on and whether or not that child's rights are being respected. So today, as you think about this, my kids will be on the internet and telling their story. I can't control that. But I can help guide them, and I can help them make some choices that might be better long-term. But if they fail, should I judge them, or should I help them stand back up? In the world of the internet, I'm gonna be the first generation of parent who is able to help my child go to that next level. My dad, as much as he's a smart man, he calls me to put his font bigger on his phone. He wanted to show me a website recently. He printed 30 pages of a website physically on paper using full-color ink and put it in a file folder to show me the website he was interested in. And then he told me to type out the URL for the YouTube link. My father's a surgeon. He's a smart man, yet the website still kind of is a bit of an issue for him. So here's where I'm gonna encourage you as parents not to try and keep up with your kids with all the trends and all the things. It's about understanding how human beings can act. It doesn't matter the platform. If you've ever taught your child about being safe when the things are getting dark, or at a bus station, or when it comes down to walking down an alley that maybe they shouldn't be walking down, the tools you give them might be the best approach. As opposed to the "I know a lot about Facebook, Instagram, TikTok," or whatever else is in between. But if you don't know what a TikTok is, well, it's because you're not a middle school child. And at the same time, when we think about how these platforms evolve, in five years, we won't be talking about Snapchat or TikTok. We'll be talking about whatever's next. So here's where I'm gonna challenge you again. These things here, I didn't notice. I didn't put the names at the bottom or anything like that. This would take forever to explain. How do adults use technology? Social media? Let's start with that value. Anybody here like to text and drive? Anybody like to fall asleep with a phone next to your body? Is anybody here taking a selfie? The best part about my job is that when I ask this question to children, they sell out their parents so hard. I've been doing this for a long time. But when I have a child do this, yes. So my mom's on an app, and sometimes she swipes right, and sometimes she swipes left, and sometimes there's a person who comes over to the house. Not my place to judge, but the child is watching what the adult's doing. My dad plays too many video games. "I don't think so, but that's what my mom says, and that's why she says they're not together anymore." Kids say things. My uncle's growing a bunch of plants in his basement. He takes pictures of those and puts them on Facebook, and everybody talks about them. That was 2011. And the RCMP officer who was in that presentation was doing this. "Oar, oar." Thank you. But here's the hard part. If I ask my children, "Hey, what do you see dad doing on his phone?" I'd get the same responses. Dad's on the device. Dad doesn't leave the home without the device. But what I try and do in my work is I try and cut out time where my kids will see me on my device, and they understand the purpose of why I'm on it. So if I go to my kid's soccer practice and I say, "Hey, listen, 60-minute practice? You're gonna see me on my phone for 20 minutes. I'm just catching up on a couple emails, and once I'm done, I'm gonna be right out there." Once I'm out there, I'm not back on my phone unless it's an emergency. And my daughter calls me on it. She says, "Dad, I saw you answer the phone during practice." And I'll reply back, "Yep, mom called. She asked me to pick up something." I always answer mom's phone calls. Right? Little expectations met. And the more your children understand how you use technology, how it frustrates you, and when it comes down to it, how you'd really like to go back in time some days, maybe those values will emerge for them where they say, "I sat at a table today on a date with a person, and I realized that person's not worth my time." Because all they did was stare at their phone the entire time, and I remember what it was like being at a kitchen table where an adult was looking at their phone more than they're looking at the great kid that was sitting in front of them. So ideally, we talk to our kids about how we can help them. But this is a space now that's emerging. The idea that we talk to our children about digital consent, that somebody has permission to take pictures of them. So tomorrow, I'm gonna visit one of your schools. And what do I know about the rules of going into that building? Now, as an educator, I have to approach any child I'm talking to with the benefit that that child is not an adult. I have a duty of care in that regard. And then my content and my conversation should be reflective of the age group I'm speaking to. But also, that I can't hold my phone up and videotape all the kids and put them on the internet to publicize myself. I need the child's permission, which is the most important, but easiest to get. "Hey, who wants to take a selfie? There's gonna be 20 kids there." School permission, parental permission, and then a disclosure of how I'm going to use that information. Now, the hard part about my job is that it does evolve. And evolving in your work is not about necessarily kind of keeping up. It's about recognizing where trends change and how you yourself have to adapt. But when I go to a school and I have children who say, "How do I teach my parents to stop taking pictures of me and putting me on the internet so their friends can see?" That's our next hurdle within our own homes. "How do I get my mom to stop texting and driving?" That's a hurdle that, I mean, eventually the police will catch up to that. But when it comes down to it, in Canada last year, more drivers over 35 got distracted driving tickets than people under 35. So it's a legitimate research piece. But at the same time, how do we take pictures of individuals and not think about the impacts? Whether it's in public, and public, it's a very different conversation. But walking into a public school is not a public place. It's a place of privilege. The students in those buildings, they adhere to a student code of conduct. But if they grew up in a space where everybody's always taking pictures because we have the technology, what does it mean to teach them about the boundaries and preferred use of technologies in those spaces? So as you think about this, yes, certain laws have developed, especially when it comes to things like screenshots and, you know, images that have been sent from boyfriend to girlfriend and everything in between. But the reality of it is, most of our laws in Canada are actually in place to protect adults over 18 when it comes to intimate images. We haven't had to change our child pornography laws in Canada to adapt to the internet because our child pornography laws are pretty, pretty strong. And in that, maybe, just maybe, the way that we look at technology has to also change with laws. But at the same time, the laws don't catch up to technology until bad events happen. So in 2014, Canada introduced the Intimate Images Act. It protected adults where if a picture had gone back and forth between a consenting couple and the other person shared it without consent, you can be now investigated based on the criminal code, having a consequence. Before that, the police would just show up and say, "Don't do that." The person would turn around and say, "What law have I broken?" None. So in 2014, adults got more empowered with the photos that they were taking. Now, when we think about kids, we keep hearing stories about kids taking pictures where they're wearing less than a bathing suit. But for them, maybe they're influenced by a person who became successful for taking pictures wearing less than a bathing suit. And if you think that Instagram is a safe space from pornography, just don't Google the words that might lead you down that path. So as you think about the idea of using technologies, illegal content on phones, that's a thing that exists. But no police officer is walking down the street screaming, "Hey, kid, I wanna check your phone for nudes." When it comes down to a disclosure from a student, somebody's been victimized, that's where that evolution of conversation comes in. But as you think about this today, we teach our kids that everything that's in front of us is documented. Notice that a bunch of you have taken out your phones and taken pictures of my slides. Did I say it was okay? It's fine. Don't worry about it. They're already filming anyway. But it is the idea that we have taken the technology we have and put it into a convenience space where our children watch us. Now, who here can remember having a camera that you put film into? And you took 24 pictures, right? Now, I can remember having that camera and using it the first time where half of the photos were useless, and a couple of them were okay. But never would I have spent $20 to take 24 selfies, go to the store, drop off the film, come back seven days later, and then take the pictures that were developed and hand them out to my friends at school saying, "Here, here's a picture of me in my bathroom pretending I'm gangster." Because first and foremost, nothing about me is gangster. But secondly, just the idea that I would spend the money, or the idea of using the tool to document myself, that's a societal shift where now we have kids who are empowered saying, "I don't care what I look like. I exist, and if I'm gonna put myself out there, how dare you bring me down." And to be fair, I want more of that than the idea of everybody looking perfect. So in that, I'm not asking you to become experts on every single social media platform. What I am asking you to do, though, is talk to your kids about how they're telling their story. What does it mean for them to go and make a YouTube video? What does it mean for them to go on Instagram and share something? And if you're comfortable as a family with your child being online and telling a story, support them. If you're not, bring your family values to the table and say, "Here's what I'm comfortable with you telling." I would prefer, though, if you weren't telling everybody that we're on vacation for the next 10 days. Because if you do go away on vacation for 10 days, you wouldn't spray paint the front door and say, "This house is empty for 10 days." But on social media, who here has a friend that does that, and you're like, "Stop telling everybody everything." So as we think about the tool of social media, it's bringing the world closer together. We're all more aware. But the reality of it is, as much as there's a benefit, we're currently in the swing back of, "Look at how bad these things are." And that's where some of that negative right now, that we do need to go through a bit of the negative to get to the next version of the optimism and positivity that social media did bring about five years ago. So I'm gonna pivot our conversation really quickly to gaming, which in itself is a social media, especially in the sense that kids are wearing headsets and talking to people they don't know and talking to their best friend. Just a point of my work. At the beginning of the school year, I was in Yellowknife, about two hours north of Yellowknife, and I worked with 50 kids from across the Arctic. They were brought together to work with each other and then go back to their home communities to bring their ideas, working as learners. About four weeks before the event, all the kids were sent a list of who was going to this camp. And they started playing video games against each other. They added each other on Instagram. And if you can ever remember as a kid meeting people in a space where you're like, "Hi." Awkward. They showed up and like, "I beat you in a game last night." And they were so excited to see each other face-to-face. So the technology brought these kids closer before they were actually physically put closer together. So one of those little benefits. But has anybody ever seen a gaming competition? Who's ever watched your kids playing video games, like, but they're watching people play video games? Like, "I don't understand what's going on." Gaming is huge. This is in the city of Vancouver, in Rogers Arena. This is where the Canucks play hockey. For this audience and group that's watching, they spent about $250 US to get into the building, lower bowl. Those of you shaking your head, if you get Raptors tickets, if you get Leafs tickets, and you know how much they cost. As a kid, if I grew up Montreal, my dad didn't have a lot of money at the time, so we went to the Canadians' games and we stood in the standing-room-only seats in the Montreal Forum. It was five bucks, and you basically had to stand the entire time if you got in. These people are paying money to watch something that they're interested in. So if you've seen people at the Leafs games or the Raptors games and it seems like they're on their phones, they spent money to do a lot of things. Watch a sport, tell people they're at the sport, and then live tweet the sport. These individuals here, they're going nuts because this is a championship event, and the winning team, the four of them, they're the underdogs, so it's kind of like the Leafs winning a Stanley Cup. Sorry. Kind of like the Canucks winning a Stanley Cup. Sorry, I'm just making sure. I gotta know my crowd. Wow. Also checking to see if you're awake. Three days of video game competition, the winning team took away $11.5 million. So, who here's like, "Let's learn a little bit more about this video game thing." Not every kid who plays basketball makes it to the NBA. But there are a lot of people who play basketball who make it to NCAA and get a free education. Right? What they do with that, that's in their hands. Not a lot of kids who play hockey make it to NHL, but they might make it close, and they got that scholarship, and they got a degree, and then they went to law school, and now they're an agent. But I haven't, I mean, it's been three solid decades since we saw the last female NHL player, and even then, it was a bit of a publicity stunt. But when we think about the idea of equality, gaming is. We have female gamers in Canada who make a lot of money. In fact, the highest-earning female gamer last year took home just under $1 million US. She lives in Seoul, Korea, and she goes to the University of Regina online. But that said, the inequality exists because the highest-earning male gamer in Canada last year won $1.8 million. So not necessarily saying ability, maybe just pay scale needs to change. So as we think about this, though, and maybe you don't want your kid playing video games too often, what I'm highlighting here is that there are positive outlets in anything that we sometimes think is a waste of time. This elder in Treaty Four, which is just outside of Regina, he recognized that a lot of his kids in the community were prone to gang violence, alcohol, and narcotic abuse. And he also noticed a lot of them liked to play video games, and they dropped out of high school along the way. So as a person who played video games himself, he set up a space. He got a donation. Local casino, which was on tribal land, said, "We can give you some space. We can give you some data." And now the kids come in, a couple rules. You're sober. No issues with police and community during the week. And you're here to play and be a part of the community. He's now found ways to get high school credits in, things like business education, art design, computer science. And people are coming and saying, "Hey, can I participate?" Anytime we can take kids out of bad spaces in their life, bad influences, we put them in a space where we can figure out how to get education to them, that's going to be a pivotal change. But for his kids who now have jerseys and they're sponsored and they're making some money playing a video game, in his eyes, it's a lot better than him struggling to get the kids into a classroom. The classroom's there now, but he had the kids come for a different reason. But within this, this good versus bad approach to screens, it might be comfortable for us as parents, but I do want to highlight one thing. I'm not up here advocating that social media is good or bad. I'm not highlighting that playing a video game is good or bad. I'm saying the tools are neutral. Human beings are still pushing the buttons. And so in that, when we teach our kids how to have empathy, how to care for one another, it's not the idea that they're perfect. But social media does one really good thing. It captures that one moment in life where we're not perfect and makes it seem like it's entirely who we are. And if you've seen people pile onto individuals and make their lives living hell because they made a mistake, how is it that we kind of compare our generation and say, "I'm so glad I grew up without this technology." I think we're all pretty happy that what we did that made us embarrassed or didn't make us feel great wasn't documented and put out there for everybody to see. So when we think about the video games, we need critical thinking. We need kids who are going to think in different ways when it comes down to kind of tackling some of the issues that we've created for them. And if something that they do online can help them do that, whether it's mathematics or physics, whether it's social sciences, becoming more aware of the world and developing empathy through screens, I'm not gonna be curbing it. I'm gonna be helping guiding it. But at the same time, how about we reconsider our approach to how we kind of talk about electronic tools? I meet kids who say, "My mom or dad, they got me a phone for my birthday, but now it's been taken away because they didn't like I was texting my friend." Just the idea that you get something to meet a value of safety. "We thought you finally deserved a phone, so we got it for you on your birthday." And now, because your friend texts you a bad word, the phone's been ripped out of your hands. That right there seems like a contradiction in terms. You want your kid to be safe, and you feel a cell phone's gonna be a part of that? That's the tool you got them. It doesn't get taken away because their friend sent them a bad word. But if your child's using your network in a way that's negative, they're going to websites that don't meet your family value, they're using a tool that's getting them into trouble, open up a dialogue and then provide consequence. But at the same time, now that kid's phone's in their pocket, how unsafe is that walk from home to school? So as we figure out those balances, what I'm thinking about is that this on-off switch idea, it might not be realistic. It might not be realistic for all of us. Because if you've checked email before your feet touch the bedroom floor, you're part of the economy that we've created. If you're going to work and you left your phone and it only takes you five minutes to drive back home, that five-minute drive is what you're choosing in your day to kind of deal with, to go back and get the thing that's gonna make you feel better throughout it. If you've been on a plane and you've seen the plane coming in for landing, and you see everybody putting their phone on so they can check things really quickly, what happened in that two-and-a-half-hour span that makes you feel like the world around you is crashing down? We've created this for our children. And it might not be realistic for us to sit here and say, "Hey, by the way, we want you to go back in time." So if we, as a family, set up boundaries and expectations, it does empower youth. If you tell them, "Here's what time the phone is away." If you tell them, "Here's what time the phone is away, here's where it's charging, here's what time you're done your game," and you look for those little wins, you might find a starting approach to a conversation with your kids. And if they've been really good, and the grades are up, and they've been doing the extracurricular things, and they undid the dishwasher, you go, "Hey, I know you want to play fifteen more minutes of Fortnite, go for it tonight." Little wins that would give your kid the opportunity to say, "I did something good, and I got something in reward." But at the end of the day, though, let's just kinda break down the benefits here really quickly. I want you to look at some of the research benefits that are emerging. And these are snippets, right? And these are groups of research that we're seeing. And just for a second, look at a couple of them and ask yourself, "I'd like to hire a person who can do that." Especially the second-to-last point. Figure out things on their own. I tried to put IKEA furniture together with my wife. I think we got really close to having a divorce. Because the IKEA furniture doesn't show you, you know, it shows you awkward pictures and how to fit things together, and it's supposed to look like the end product. But somewhere along the way, we figured out that it's not supposed to look like that, and now we hate each other. But a kid who plays Legend of Zelda and can figure out how to go to the next level and plan accordingly, it's amazing to see how kids take these skills with good guidance in classrooms and figure out based on the critical thinking skills that they're developing. So some of these ideas might not be ready for your home. But if your child's building a video game in class and they're learning the mathematics that go behind that science, good, that's the skill we need. Because to be honest, half the mathematics skills I grew up with, I don't use. And to be honest, my phone does most of it for me. So does QuickBooks. So the reality is, I'm not an accountant, and to be fair, I'm glad I have a good one. But if, when it comes down to understanding the tools, the basics, school's gonna give that to them. What we need more kids being aware of is how that thing they wrote on the internet affects somebody. And the more life experience we can bring to that dialogue, that can make things better. But today, when I advocate for balance, because if we do see small, you know, beneficial effects, it doesn't mean we need to revamp our entire curriculum. It doesn't mean that we need to sit here and say, "All kids need to play video games." We have to just consider the world that we're getting our kids towards. And in that, the world that they're getting towards is self-driving cars. It is the idea that the internal combustion engine is going to go away, and as it should. But at the same time, when we think about the way things have changed, my grandmother can still remember the first radio that came into her house. That meant a person now had a radio repair job. First television that came in, television repair job. But if you can remember the first ideas of cars coming forward, people didn't buy cars right away. They were terrified of them. And also, the people who put shoes on horses, anyone know what that job's called? Horse with an F? Ferrier. I'm sure there were a couple of ferrier unions saying, "If you bring in these horseless carriages, what are we gonna do for work?" Well, in my neighborhood where I live, we have four ferriers, and we have a lot of horses. The four ferriers are so busy because there's not enough people to put shoes on the horses. That said, maybe the mechanic in forty years will be a person sought after to fix a collector car or to fix a motorcycle. But at the end of the day, your child learning how to build an electric vehicle. That skill set is something that's emerging right now. I don't know if you've seen it, but PetroCanada has an advertisement where they say, "We're building Canada's first electric highway from coast to coast." I was recently in Merritt, British Columbia, where there are right now twenty electric charging stations. And because it's the closest spot you can get a full charge on your highway to Vancouver from the closest other major metropolitan area, the community feels revitalized because people are coming in to plug in their cars and get some food along the way. Every industry is gonna change. But at the end of the day, what does it mean to look at things differently? This guy here, I'm just going based on what I see from his behind. Who here would say he looks older? Yeah? Okay, good. I have a consensus in not being an ageist. He is digging a hole. He's using an excavator. He's sitting in Munich, Germany, and the excavator is in Seoul, Korea. He's using video game technology to do that. That kid who's fourteen years old, who's pushing buttons and doing things, they're developing skill sets. What they need is a teacher to make them think, "Here's what you can do with that skill set." The University of British Columbia currently has students who are receiving scholarships for playing esports. Marquette, which is a Division One NCAA school, has a fifty-eight-million-dollar gaming center for students to go on full scholarship to go to university. Most of those kids, well, not too many concussions, but they like playing video games. And a lot of them are young men, and I want to see more equality in that regard. But that said, when I watch college football on a Sunday, college basketball during March, I don't watch the women's version. I'd like to know why I don't. Maybe it's my media exposure, maybe it's just the fact it's not my interest. But my son likes watching women's hockey, and he likes watching women's soccer because his sister plays soccer. So in that, the more we expose our kids to things, the more well-rounded they become. But if this old guy here, who obviously knows how to dig a hole using excavator, can sit there and say, "Wait, you're telling me this machine is four thousand kilometers away? I'll give it a whirl." He might be the first one to say, "Hey, things are changing, and maybe we don't have to spend as much money to fly a person out there. We can just get them in a control center, and the machine's gonna do the work, and the operator's gonna do their job, and we're gonna figure out how to dig that hole to stop that forest fire well before we ever have to put a person in danger." So today, as we get ready to wrap, I'm gonna ask this question. Does it cause interference? You'll notice that the entire question is worded, but I've highlighted, "Does it cause interference?" for a very specific reason. Is that if your kid gets good grades and goes to bed at a reasonable time and gets up early in the morning and ready to go, plays a sport, and has good relationships with people, yet you still can't stand seeing them on that stupid phone, what's wrong? What's wrong with the kid being on the device if all those other things are being met? And then you have the other parent who says, "Well, because of the phone, my kid's grades have gone down." Okay, but how can we use the phone to bring the grades up? Where's the equality in that conversation? Because maybe your child is having a harder time in reading the printed work on a textbook than maybe using Google Translate to help out along the way. See, in that, the "does it cause interference?" is subjective because I don't know your kid. And to be fair, the school doesn't know your kid. You do. But your kid at school might be entirely different than what you expect them to be because they're at school and they're away from you. Who here did that periodically? Just a little bit different when you got to school? Yeah. But the interesting part about the social media world is that now that we live in a world where we can post pictures and tell people stories, the identity of the child seems to actually be a little bit more well-developed, well-branded. And some kids do brand themselves. So your kid's worried about their YouTube channel during the entire day. Okay, they're worried about their brand. What can we do to bring down those fears and those anxieties? But I will highlight this. A child who's fourteen years of age should be getting anywhere between eight to ten hours of sleep a night. Who here would love to get ten hours of sleep a night? Absolutely love it. I could barely get four and a half on the best nights. And so within that, maybe I've just got too many stresses in life, or maybe I'm not in a good sleep pattern. But even the times where I'm on vacation, I don't sleep well, and I don't know why. That said, I do know why. My dad doesn't sleep well. I grew up watching somebody who didn't sleep well. And I also grew up in a time where things were different. I didn't have as many stresses. But I can only imagine what it means to be a sixteen-year-old kid where all of a sudden your friend's texting you in a group chat at 7:00 AM is the thing that's motivating you to get up out of bed because you just wanna turn the darn phone off. So now when we think about the idea of participation with friends, your kids are connected to people, and you are looking for those red flags when it comes to them being connected to the wrong types of people in sense of influence and content. But when it comes down to kids being connected, they do connect further than we can ever imagine these days. I meet kids who have friends who go to different secondary schools, the schools closest to them, the schools farthest away from them in their district. I meet kids who tell me about their friends, who teach them all the bad words in different languages, and I love that. Because I can say a bunch of bad words in about six different languages. And I only do that because when somebody cuts me off, I wanna use the right terminology, just so they understand. But at the end of the day, my daughter's learning five different languages, not just based on school curriculum, but also because she has friends from different parts of the world. And those friends play video games against her, and they talk to each other, and she listens to K-pop. And even though I don't understand the words, I love watching her have fun with it. So today, as you think about the words that you learned in a different language growing up, at what point did media influence you? Was it the song that you heard in English, and even though you didn't understand it, you liked the tune? Was it the song that your friend showed to you because they had a version of it? For me, it was in Montreal growing up, my dad's Anglophone, my mom's Francophone. My mom would play French music to expose us to those sides of it. And even though I didn't know all the words, because sometimes it was just going way too fast, I still hung on to those memories. Your kids now live in a world where their friends will expose them to everything, good and bad. But if they can't come and talk to you about it, they're gonna turn to somebody else who's gonna listen. And I'm hoping it's not the scary person on the internet that none of us want our kids talking to. So today, as we kinda take our next step and we think about that struggling with communications balance, I love communications. As a whole, the technologies we have, the way we connect the world, I love that it exists. I hate that it gives everybody a stand right now, though, because a lot of people, when it comes to the hate that's being shared, some of the fake news, and some of the things that just aren't backed up by actual facts, that terrifies me. But at the same time, I know there's a new generation coming forward who say, "Yeah, I know you read that thing on the internet, and it might make you feel good, but here's what all the facts are saying." Those kids emerging from school are being guided by teachers who are saying, "You're trying to, you know, pass off your homework to me by proving to me that you did it, but I know that you copied and pasted it from the internet. That's not enough. We need you to do the work. We need you to show us how you got there." And the more that our kids use the internet that way, the better they're gonna be in the next ten, fifteen years. But here's where I'm gonna ask you as parents to do something. Whether it's social media literacy, gaming, whatever platforms they're on, we as parents, we have to be willing to be open to the conversations our kids bring to us. Example, about a year and a half ago, my daughter was doing a school project. She chose breast cancer as part of the dialogue. She Googled "breast cancer", searched a couple of things, turned the screen around, and there was some explicit content on the screen, more so than just a set of breasts. And she said, "Daddy, I think, I think something happened." And I said, "Wow, how'd you get there?" And she said, "I just typed in some stuff, click, click, click. I went back, saw the path, and I said, 'Wow, that, that didn't take long at all, did it?'" She ended up in a spot that she, I would never want my kids to be on the internet, especially at their ages. But at least she was comfortable talking to me. I can only imagine my dad's response of, "How dare you let her, you know, use the internet that way." My dad's generation, your parents' generation, whether they're the same or just a couple of decades off, just keep a couple of things in mind. We are the first group of adults who raise our children with technology this way. Personalized, in our hands. They've watched us do this, where we do business on our phone, take pictures on our phone, check text messages on our phone, Google things because we don't know the actor in that movie. At the end of the day, this is their normal. We've created this. And holding it back is not going to stop anything. It's going to keep moving forward. But honestly, if you see your kids put technology down for certain things in life, don't count it as a blessing. Understand that there are times when they don't wanna be on it. You got a kid who plays sports, and you never see them taking a selfie while trying to take a three-point shot? It's because they love the sport they're playing. And I've never met a coach who starts screaming at a kid to get off the basketball court because they're too busy checking their phone. To be honest, most kids turn around and say, "That would be the stupidest thing I could possibly do because I'm not living up to the expectations of the game." But I really feel for teachers when they're being told you have to take phones away from students. Because that's not their job. But maybe, just maybe, teachers also have to be a little bit more willing to make their environment, the teaching space, the classroom, as engaging as whatever somebody else is sending that kid on a phone. And to be fair, that's where education is shifting. We are seeing more teachers diving into the internet, saying, "How can I use these tools to engage my classroom?" About eight years ago, I did a professional development day where teachers said very bluntly, "I'm only here because I have to be." Hated technology. And after I showed some examples, he had emailed me about two weeks later, and he said, "I took a couple of things that you suggested, and I played around with something, and now I figured out a way to use a video game in my physics lesson. I'm really excited to go and teach my kids next week." Just the idea that you have a teacher who's been teaching for twenty-five years, now excited to go and teach something differently, I count that as a personal win. But when you have your technology available, just test yourself. What does it mean to leave the home without it? Do you feel okay? The people you text and call, the five most times, you know, family and friends, do you know their phone numbers? And when it comes down to the pictures that we take, do you take enough of them and actually put it on our literal walls inside of our home? As opposed to a wall on social media where people just push a button and go on to the next picture of a happy dog or food or whatever it is? So for parents, just a couple of best practices. You don't have to become an expert on every platform, but I am encouraging you to ask your kid, "What do you like to do on the internet? What's interesting to you?" And they might tell you about making slime, or they might tell you about Ninja, or they might tell you about PewDiePie, and you might sit there and go, "I have no idea what any of the words you just said are." But if you can be open to hearing them explain it, you'll be able to find a couple of moments to bring your life experience to their conversation. And if you judge them and you say, "What a waste of time. You're watching people play video games on the internet." They're gonna be quick to turn around and say, "Didn't you just watch the Raptors win a championship? Because we watch millionaires play a sport they love." Because, well, we sometimes just love what we love. And if your kid likes something on the internet, how dare we take them down? But that said, when we think about what it means to open up a conversation, I know I'm not gonna go and have my dad watch hours of people playing video games on TV with me. He won't do it. The same way my son right now isn't that interested in watching hockey. It's not his thing. He doesn't like watching hockey. He'd rather watch Netflix Planet Earth, where they show the animals and things like that. So should I get mad that my son's not into the same thing I am? Maybe a different generation of dad might. Maybe somebody in the room might as well. But again, for my, make my son feel bad that he's not into hockey the same way I am? That's not parenting. That's bullying. So today, as we think about being open, proactive, talking to your child, a couple of just red flags, and it's not a hundred percent, it's just the maybe. Can your child leave the device at home and be okay with that? If your child's terrified that they don't have their phone with them and somebody can't get a hold of them, that might be reflective of what they've been taught about the value of the phone. But again, apply it to yourself. Can you go to the store without your device? Are you okay with that? When it comes down to the idea of, "Does your child demonstrate device anxiety if you pick it up?" I know it's your phone. I know you bought it. I know you got them a plan, and I'm not taking away that parenting value for you. But I'm gonna highlight two really important pieces that we engrain in our children. If I put my phone down at home, and my wife picks it up, and I scream at her, "Don't touch that, that's not yours." Who here sees a red flag? Yes. So my wife's fingerprint will open up my phone. She can go into it if she wants to. I have no concerns with that. But she doesn't because we trust each other. And even if she has to go into my phone, I'm hoping she's gonna be transparent and say, "Hey, I used your phone yesterday because I had to. I just had to do something." If your child sees you on their phone, "I know it's yours, but on their phone," and they react as if, "What are you doing?" Who here had a diary when you were a child? If you walked into your bedroom and saw one of your parents flipping through every page of your diary, how would you feel? Come on. Sad, upset, violated, not comfortable, right? What if it was the really good diary that you had stashing right to floorboards? Not the one that you left up so they can sneak, because you had a sneaky mom? Our children treat our phones like diaries. And whenever I do a corporate event, I usually have about five hundred people in the room. I ask people to hold up their phones and pass it to the person on their left. I've seen grown adults shake their head, "No." I've seen grown adults put passwords on it, power it off, and then hand it over because they don't wanna do this stupid icebreaker. But they treat their phones like a diary. What's on your device that you wouldn't want the world to see? When I meet parents who say, "I feel safe because I read my child's text messages," that's not parenting. That's oversight and you feeling better because your anxieties have been quenched. But if my daughter or son, at the age of twenty-three, twenty-four, is in a relationship with somebody, and they're paying their own bills, but my kid comes home and says, "Oh, my boyfriend or girlfriend goes through my phone once a month just to see if they feel good and they can trust me." How quickly am I doing everything I can to get my kid out of that relationship? Parenting with oversight is about giving boundaries. And periodically saying, "Hey, we're gonna do a spot check today." Or, "Hey, guess what? I was on the internet, and I figured out that our website, or our router went to a bunch of websites that this family doesn't agree with." But if you understand what your kids are capable of doing with the internet, it's not about saying, "This is good, this is bad." It's understanding that when they bump into the bad stuff, the stuff you don't want them doing, you still have to be the safest place they can come talk to. And if they feel like you're gonna take away the device or be going through it like a hawk, then maybe, just maybe, they're gonna find a way to get around you. The same way we got around our parents with whatever it was that they thought was really bad. So one of the questions that was submitted prior to, you know, as you signed up, there was some Q and A that was asked. We're gonna sit on a panel and discuss those. But one of them was, "Are there any book recommendations?" And I have a couple personal ones that I do like recommending, only because it kinda covers the gambit of some of the things we've talked about. First and foremost, the people's platform, taking power back and culture, or sorry, taking back power and culture in the digital age. Astra Taylor wrote this book about how the internet was going to start shaping. And in 2014, when this was published, she predicted a lot of things that we're seeing right now: politics, fake news, people believing things. And she kinda highlighted, "If this tool is supposed to be for the people, we need to engage this in a way where the governments can't control it." we need to engage this in a way where the governments can't control it. Very good book and I recommend it to high school kids and they read it like, "We need to get back to this." Lost in a Good Game. The idea that video games can help you with your education. Dr. Etkels wrote this book this past year, it's very good. If you like novels, has anybody watched Stranger Things? Has anybody seen Stranger Things? This is like Stranger Things but with video games. Not scary, just a little bit of a Romeo and Juliet story where the boy thinks the girl doesn't know anything about video games. The Impossible Fortress is one of my favorite books in the past five years, it's a novel. And I'm getting kids in grade eight and nine to read it because I think it's amazing to see the viewpoints. I work with a group of gaming kids, primarily boys. When they, when two of them read it, they're like, "I didn't even know girls would be interested in playing video games." And it's like, "How did you not know that? Say you're a gamer, why in the world would you think that girls wouldn't be interested in..." Like, "Maybe I got to knock down some of my own biases." Who here would let a child give you a haircut? No? This is Darren O'Donnell, he's based here in Ontario. Haircuts by Children. He empowers the voice of the child by really highlighting some of their abilities. And he says, "Hey, you want to give me a haircut? Let's go for it." He's had some doozies. But he's also reached out to the kids who probably didn't have anybody trust them along the way. And so in that, the idea that children can be trusted with even our own appearance. I love how he's knocked that down. A couple textbooks, and this is for those of you who are looking a bit more at the research. The Qualified Self and Personal Connection in the Digital Age. Textbooks, you can find them online, you can Google them and you'll probably find some of the research and papers that are there. And on my closing slide, we didn't really get too much into this, we can do this on the panel. Kids are taking pictures of themselves. And some of those pictures, they're wearing less than bathing suits. So in that, this is Amy Hassanov. She's a researcher out of Colorado, but she went to McGill for most of her research work. She wrote a book called Sexting Panic. And it was basically about whenever we hear stories about kids and these, you know, how they're taking nudes and whatnot, it's usually headline news based on the fact that kids have been suspended from schools or expelled. It doesn't really get into what it means for these kids to be empowered with the idea that they can share a part of their person without any judgment. It's supposed to go to that one person and now that the photo's circulating, it's causing problems, how we don't really help support them, we sometimes shame them. So her book's very good. And Kids and Video Games: Moral Combat. It's kind of a twist on the old video game Mortal Kombat. This book kind of takes away some of those fears that parents have with, you know, you're watching your child play a violent video game, does this mean that your child's going to become violent? I'm going to be honest with you when it comes to domestic violence. I didn't experience it in my home and how dare I comment on it? But I've seen violence in my world. And in that, the idea of children seeing violence, I will protect my children as much as I can from not only violence in my family home, but just the things that they can see on TV. I don't want them seeing people getting hurt. But they will see it. And it's something that I can't stop in our connected world. But when it comes down to the idea of children and domestic violence, the majority of kids in Canada who demonstrate violent tendencies see domestic violence. And they see violence in their home as an answer. It's not from video games. It's from the way they see people treat people, especially when it comes to power. So within that, teaching your children about violence and knowing that violence is not an answer to any solution, that right there is the key. But if they are playing a video game or you feel that your child is prone to thinking, "This is how you treat somebody, this is how you deal with the situation and that's what their perception is," that's about addressing a child, not all children. And so some of these books, again, they kind of break that down so we understand a bit more about the way that we're addressing children one-on-one, supporting our schools. And as a closing piece, how we're getting information to people where they can make a smart choice. I will tell all of you in this room, social media is a wonderful tool. But if people are believing the first thing they see on social media